...of 2010. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor, and I'm a short timer.[5.33][5.33](Laughter).
I'm Doug Neely, and it looks like I'll be around for a while.[11.12][11.12](Laughter).
Rocky Smith, City Commissioner.
Daphne West, City Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to citizen comments.
Can I ask a question?
No, you're out of order.
Just a quick one. I think our city manager should introduce our new city attorney here.[50.53][50.53](Laughter).
Oh, you mean Wild Bill Hickok?[54.12][54.12](Laughter). Welcome back, Bill, or whoever you are. The next item on the agenda is something to do with ceremonies, proclamations, and presentations.
I put in a card in for public.
You were not there yet.
Yeah.
I did, but it was a joke.
She's...
We don't have a copy of the agenda.
Oh, there isn't one out there? Okay.
It disappeared.
Oh, sorry, they must have been taken by the urban renewal rowdies, probably. Yes, this is my last meeting, I don't really have to do anything in order.[96.03][96.03](Laughter). So just expect a lot of surprises tonight. All right, all those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I don't know who's doing this ceremony proclamation presentation. Are we swearing in a dog or anything, or what's going on?
Well, actually, I'm gonna make a couple of comments and some thoughts. I'm doing this at the beginning rather than the end because I know some people will be falling asleep out there if we waited to the end. I've had the pleasure of working with Daphne West for four years and with the mayor for six, and I'd like to just make a couple of comments before I make my presentations. One's gonna be a personal one and one's gonna be a more official one. Daphne, I know how difficult it is to go through an election process and lose, I happened to meet two. With me, it was a major difference, about 20 percent difference between the person that defeated me and my own. In your case, it was a case where you had three people running, they all got over 30 percent of the vote, and it was, I think, a well-fought campaign on everybody's part. But when I see close campaigns like that, I just wonder to what degree it's kind of a crapshoot, it's, you know, kind of a roll of the dice as to what happens. And if you ever decide you want to run for public office again, and you run into the same situation where you think it's gonna be a close vote, I think you gotta prepare yourself for those things that appear to be a crapshoot, so I've given you a present here that is actually a training device for that specific.
Oh, dear.[220.23][220.23](Laughter).
And you have to open it now.[223.29][223.29](Laughter).
I hope this won't be a distraction for decision-making for the rest of the meeting.
Well, those are sort of disturbing words for a logical thinker like me to think that any time I run for office would be a crapshoot.[238.31][238.31](Laughter).
Oh, boy!
That was a nice... Thank you. Thank you.
And I know Alice felt that same situation, I think, about eight years ago when you ran, and it was a very close vote for previous Commissioner Holliday and yourselves, that was probably one of the closest votes I've ever seen in the city.
Closeer with Dan, about.
Well, was it? Okay, well, in any case, I should've got you a gift.[268.72][268.72](Laughter). Anyway, it's also been a pleasure working with the mayor, and I was just shocked when somebody was telling me the other day that they thought Alice was a manipulator. And I look back at my history of working with her, and in terms of issues that were coming up, I don't think I ever sat individually with her more than only maybe a four or five occasions in a six-year period, talked on the phone about some issues maybe that many times. Almost everything that I've been involved in with this mayor has really been in the public forum in terms of talking about specific issues. It occurred to me that you've recently lost an election too, and maybe you're not a manipulator and you should be, and if you're gonna run for election, then again, I'd actually, I wanna give you a training advice in terms of becoming more of a manipulator, so...
Oh, man, let's see. There. Hmm. Some rope trick. Let's see. Disappearing. It's a magic kit, so I can make people disappear.[348.31][348.31](Laughter).
Do you want me to lean now?
I'll make you disappear.
You got persons?
There we go. Oh, you're gonna keep me up high.[363.13][363.13](Laughter). All right, I have a niece that can do it in, I think it's 22 seconds or something.
Wow, wow.
Well, then you could get some assistance. Anyway, probably a more serious venture, I think I've got these right, presenting you a plaque that has been presented to Daphne West for your four years on the commission.
Thank you so much, but we are gonna save, or I'm going to save my remarks till the end of the meeting, so we can, in good order for public process, to continue moving quickly, I will resist my comments for another hour or two. I will save them, whatever it takes.
To our mayor of the last eight years.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, that's...[432.13][432.13](Applause).
And I invite staff, David, would you like to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Lex Neely. Well, we had a reception for Daphne and Mayor Norris a couple of days ago here, and I know that I and our staff had lots of opportunity to comment and say thanks to you and thank you and tribute to your service to our community. So I'm just gonna mention tonight that I've only had about, almost nine months to work with each of you, so my point of reference is not one of, I guess it's maybe in some ways more objective than others who've worked with you longer, but my point of reference does come from having worked with, and I counted this up the other day, over 70 different city council members that I've worked with in my career as a city manager and seven different mayors from three different states. And so when I take all that together, you know, Oregon City, the quality of our elected officials in general is higher than other places I've worked, and both of you, no matter how difficult the votes have been, what I have to echo what former city manager Patterson said at the tribute the other day, which was that every single time we do something here, Daphne, you and Alice, you do it with class and dignity, and you represent the community with a sense of honor and respect that I've always appreciated. And I'm really hoping that that bar you've set way up there for all of us is something we can continue to strive for and do you proud when you're not here and you're watching us, like you will be, I'm sure.[540.41][540.41](Laughter).
All right.[542.41][542.41](Laughter).
But my door also is open not only to our current elected officials and all of our citizens, but to each of you, and I really hope that you'll stay in touch and let me know how you think we're doing from time to time, so, thank you.
Anybody else wanna make any comments?
I will keep my remarks till the end as well, otherwise I probably can't get through the meeting.
Oh.
You know, at the end isn't the, we're not at the end yet. If that's okay.
It's coming close, though.
And the meeting won't be very long this evening as far as we know, because as we look at the agenda, the first public hearing has been removed, so we will not have a public hearing this evening, so that will shorten the agenda.
Well, we have the citizens' comments, so...
Yes, so next we'll move into citizen comment, and the first is William Gifford, followed by Dan Holliday. And you have one minute in which to express your...[606.82][606.82](Laughter). Please state your name and the city which you represent.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to say that one more night, and city commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I would like to speak tonight with my hat on as the Secretary for the Citizen Volvement Council. I just had a couple of quick reports. One is that at our last meeting, we had our general elections for officers for the upcoming two-year terms. Tom Guile was re-elected as chair for the next two years. The vice chair is Larry Hanlon, who is currently the coach here for the Caulfield Neighborhood Association, and he will be serving another two-year term. And yours truly was also elected for another two-year term as Secretary for the CIC. Another...
The Republican's.
Yes, another point of note for the CIC is that we did have our second reactivation meeting for the Gaffney Lane Neighborhood Association. Unfortunately, the timing was the same night as the Taste of Clackamas County, there was the horrible rainstorms, so the attendance was not as good as we'd like. We're gonna have another one in March, but everyone that did attend was appreciative of the newsletter that we put out to notify them of issues in their neighborhood, and we'll be doing that again, so we'll be looking forward to getting them going, and I suspect that we will not be waiting until Gaffney Lane is in full gear before we start working with Tower Vista to get our last two neighborhood associations reactivated. And I'm expecting that at some soon city council meeting when the new commission is all sworn in, that there will be a State of the Neighborhood Association done by our chair, I don't know that he even knows that I'm suggesting that he do that, but I think that would be appropriate for our chair to let you know what we've been doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Good.
Dan.
Good evening, Dan Holliday, I live in Oregon City. I actually came to testify tonight on the agenda item that was removed. I watched the December 15th meeting on cable. I think you'd be surprised at the number of people who do actually watch these meetings in part or in whole, but I was angered by a particular comment, and I wanted to address it, and unfortunately Commissioner Nocita isn't here tonight, but when you're talking about this garage, and it's a wider point than that, and that is, is that he said that the garage was too damn big, and I submit that it's none of your business, that if we take a couple who is 52, kids are out of the house, they're very active outdoors people, they have a boat, they have an RV, they have a pair of canoes, they have a pair of jet skis, they have a pair of four-wheel drives, you know, they have all this stuff, and they live here in Oregon City because they're an hour from the beach, an hour from the mountain, an hour from the desert.
Excuse me, Dan, are you talking about my husband and myself?[807.01][807.01](Laughter).
My point is, is that city code was developed originally, we go back into the 1800s, was to prevent, you know, catastrophic accidents like the molasses tower, you know, collapse back east and those kinds of things, and we are now running up into this area where we say we want to direct every piece of your life, and I believe that if somebody wants to have a one-bedroom house and a four-bedroom garage, because that's where they do most of their life, that that should be their right if they own that property, and so I would encourage you to think clearly about these things, that every property shouldn't be the same. You know, if you walk around historic, the historic McLaughlin District, and you have an overlay, and this property wasn't inside that overlay, so, you know, I understand about, and I fully support keeping the historic flavor of the McLaughlin neighborhood, but once we get outside of that overlay, I think it's clear that we have to let people have some freedom to do the things that they wish with their property as long as they are building it safely, and that's what the reason for the code is there, is to maintain the public safety, whether we're talking about electrical code, or plumbing code, or building code, or, you know, any of those things. So be very, very careful as you develop new code to not restrict the freedom of these folks to do the kinds of things that they wish to do on their property as long as they aren't interfering with their neighbor, and I don't believe the size of that garage interfered at all with anything that neighbors may have wanted to do, or, you know, beyond the fact that they might not like how it looks. Well, sometimes you just gotta say tough beans. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, looking at the agenda, there, actually, is that the end of citizen comment? Is there anyone who's been moved to speak? As I see none, so we'll move on then. Looking at the agenda, is there anything anyone wishes reordered?
Well, I have something to pull.
And you want something pulled off the consent agenda, which is, which one?
I'm down there. It's the, must be the minutes of the...
November 17.
Work session.
There's only two minutes, one's a regular meeting and the one's...
It's the one, actually, it may have been the commission meeting, it's the meeting on which we decided to not go ahead with the eastern purchase.
That was December 1st.
December 1st, okay, that's what I want to pull.
Okay, we'll pull that off the consent agenda, anything else?
It's D.
Is that not right?
Add anything to it?
I'll look it up in the meantime, and...
Yeah.
Okay, when we get to the consent agenda, it shall be done. Okay, now, moving back.
It shall be undone.
Yeah. First, we have the appeal, which has been removed, so do we need to have a motion to take that off of our...
It's been withdrawn.
No, I don't believe so, as I understand it, the appellant withdrew their appeal, so the application's been approved, there's no need to do anything further.
Okay, thank you very much, then we'll move on in our general business agenda. The first item is a look at the grant agreement for, which just jumped, the grant agreement for sport craft boat ramp replacement, and I assume this is Scott Archer?
It is.
City Services Director.
Mayor Norris, in commission, I don't get to say that very much longer, do I?
No.
This is an agreement with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, this is the second of two grants for this sport craft boat replacement, we've talked about the project a number of times, so I know that you're familiar with that. This approval would complete our funding package that we need. The reason that this one was delayed, as you note in your staff report, the previous, the first of the two grants from Oregon State Marine Board in the same amount, roughly the same amount, was approved over a year ago. It has to do with the delay in our permitting process, which I know that I've updated you on that a number of times as well, so that's why the gap in time. So your approval tonight would complete the funding and put us on path to get this project done finally after several years of working through our permits and our planning for this, and it's a very, very much needed project. The hope is that we'll complete this in our summer in-water work period, this coming summer 2011, so with that, my recommendation is for approval. Oh, and I do, excuse me, I do need to let you know there's been a revision to what was originally put in your packet, and you should have in your, on your screens, a revised document?
Revised agreement?
Yes, I'm sorry, the quick explanation there, it's really just kind of a technicality thing, nothing substantially has changed, the funding and everything is the same. There was a page at the end of the original agreement that had some language that conflicted with some other portions of the document. Through agreement with, and working with Bill Kibysman, our attorney, and then with, working with the state, we removed, so what's, the revision is that the last page of the original agreement was removed, that had some language that talked about not allowing contingencies in the budget, which is actually developed by the state, so their own contract was kind of contradicting itself. And then the page nine, where it has the breakdown of the preliminary cost estimate, that amount is the same, however, the way that it's broken out by line is different, it just simply removes some language about contingency. And if there are any technical questions about that contract issue, I would refer you to Mr. Kibysman, but it's really not any kind of substantial change, so...
Great, well, this has been a very tedious process, and I really appreciate, I think, particularly Denise Kai, who has been shepherding it through this...
Very much so.
Over your long process. Okay, questions from the commission? Seeing none, then may I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve an authority city manager to enter into a cooperative grant agreement for the funding towards the replacement of the sports craft boat ramp project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next, we have a contract to look at for the construction of the Oregon City Shopping Center Water Service Replacement. Nancy, is that you? Nancy Fresh, our city engineer and public works director.
Yes, that's me. Good evening, Mayor Norris and commissioners, we have a fairly small contract in front of you that exceeds the $50,000 limit that the city manager can approve on his own, and this is to replace the water meter at the Oregon City Shopping Center. As you can imagine, to serve both its fire flow and drinking water needs, it's a fairly large meter, and we're replacing this outdated meter that is an inconvenient place to monitor and maintain with a compound meter that will serve the shopping center better, it will measure the water more accurately, and it'll be in a safer location, and I'm asking you to award the bid in the amount of $67,220 to Canby Excavating.
The lowest responsible bidder.
Yes.
Great, questions from commissioners?
Just one.
Commissioner Neely.
You had the engineer's estimate, did you make that estimate, or your department makes that estimate, is that right?
This was actually done, we had a consultant do the design bid documents, do the design and prepare the bid documents for this contract, and as part of their final design, they prepared the engineer's estimate.
When that's done, is this estimate available to the people that are bidding?
No.
So this is, what I found interesting is most of these bids were right around that...
In some cases, we do that, in ODOT contracts, we give a range, for this one, I don't believe it was provided.
I see.
Other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
I move to award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute the contract agreement with Canby Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $67,220 to provide construction services for the OC Shopping Center Water Service Replacement Project.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further comments? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next, we have an ordinance to be introduced that we discussed at our work session, revision of our municipal code regarding business licenses, and who's going to do this?
Scott? I'll just give you a quick summary, again, you did review this last week at your work session. This code amendment is based on that, the recommendations and the direction from the commission that that work session was to go forward with this, so we've already reviewed the details, and so I'll spare those with you tonight unless you have any questions, but essentially this code amendment puts into place those portions of the recommendation that need to be amended or addressed by the city code, and so we're asking for your first reading of the ordinance tonight.
Great, Mr. Smith.
Was Doug ahead of me, or?
No, he was the last time. He was the last time.
I'm grayed out.
He's a lefto.
I'm grayed out.
Okay, so the recommendations that are not addressed by the municipal code are going to be, are they gonna come back to us, or is that staff decisions decide, I mean, to go forward with those?
Right.
Because there were some that I had concerns about and shared those concerns at the last meeting, so I don't know, are we gonna have more discussion on some of those, or is that gonna be at the staff level?
Well, those were essentially what I would term procedural recommendations that are under the jurisdiction of the city manager to direct staff to go forward, so my assumption is unless I'm directed otherwise, or other staff that are involved in that will proceed with that.
Well, I'm assuming, though, that the comments that were made on certain recommendations are gonna be addressed, or are we just, are we basically saying all those 24 recommendations are, we're letting the staff go forward with? I don't think that's what we were...
Are you, I'm sorry, David, did you just...
I'm getting the sense there's some confusion about the staff recommendations that are administrative, we're prepared to go ahead and proceed with those, and when we brought that report to the commission, we weren't bringing the report to you to request authorization or our decision on the administrative decisions, but what we wanted to do is ask if we do definitely need recommendations, or actually we need you to pass this ordinance if you want to implement those changes. Many of the administrative decisions that we would be implementing, and that was recommendations, we would not do if you didn't pass the ordinance, because they are basically to implement your broader decision on the ordinance. So to make sure I'm missing something, maybe you could refresh our memories about any of the comments that you made?
I have no problem approving this tonight, because it's only based on the recommendations that you spoke about just now, but in terms of all the other recommendations, there were several recommendations that I made comments on, and in fact, I believe there was some agreement on some in terms of, I think, one of which was the extra fee for businesses within the home.
Home-based.
Things like that, so there were some of those recommendations that I kind of felt after the work session that we were maybe not so recommending after that discussion, and so I just want to know in terms of those, I'm assuming the notes were taken about those discussions, and that will have some effect on the decision at the staff.
That would be an example of an item that would take council, or commission action, wouldn't be administrative. So I think we did take notes of all of your comments, and we'll be bringing back some further changes to it if that's the direction you want to go.
Also, just to clarify a little bit further, I think that specific concern, Commissioner, plus the discussion about the recommendation, about the one-time application fee, there was some discussion.
Right.
What we indicated at the work session last week was that we are, we've recommended deferral of some of those items, so I think, and I'll have to review my notes and the discussion, I think the majority of the concerns were addressed by the fact that we're probably not gonna take action on a few of the recommendations for a delayed period of time, and I would think that at the time that we thought it might be appropriate to go forward, we probably would come back and report that, so I believe that's the majority of what they were, was those items that we were gonna defer anyway.
If I might continue, what we will do is we will go back and refresh our recollection of what the notes were, as well as the tape, we'll look in there over the next couple of days before we begin implementation, and we will report back to the entire commission and an email probably from me, what we found and what we're doing to make sure we address each one, but I didn't see anything in those comments that would be inconsistent with our implementation, so I think we could...
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Neely?
I guess I assume that the, we're not hearing any testimony on this, and I was just wondering if, we don't have anybody coming up? Chamber of Commerce saw this, and there was nothing coming from the chamber?
We've not actually learned much about this at this point.
Okay, because there are P increases associated with this.
Our government...
You need to come to the microphone, Amber. Yes, we can't hear you otherwise.
Why not?
Amber Holbeck, Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and live just outside of the Oregon City city limits. In regard to the chamber reviewing the proposed business license changes, both to ordinance as well as fees, those kinds of things, our Government Economic Affairs Committee has not met to review these specifically, and it's been, how do I explain this? The flow of information has not been such that we've been able to get that on our agenda.
Is there a meeting, would you have it scheduled, Government, Economics, and Affairs?
We probably won't meet until January. When is your, is this the first public meeting?
This is the first reading, yeah.
First reading, so your second reading would be?
I think it's gonna be January 19th, because we're not gonna do it at the first meeting of the year.
What I would love to do, if this would be practical within, from city staff, is to maybe have a city staff person join us at a January meeting to discuss... maybe have a city staff person join us at a January meeting to discuss these changes. And I can work with David and we can set that up.
So we can open a public hearing for our second reading too.
Absolutely, and that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it Doug. Alice.
So are my questions as well? Commissioner West?
I had two questions and I missed the work session on this, so I'm sorry. You probably all covered it and I didn't. On page seven of the one document, because I lost my thing here.
Which one?
On, how do I get back here?
The ordinance? The red line?
The red line.
Yes, that's.
So it's when they talk about additional fees, which is letter D, and then number one was, so am I reading that right? So if you had an event downtown, say like Rocky has this Pioneer Festival or Main Street has First Cities Art Fair, it's going to cost $300 for a permit that day?
I think that's always been in there. I don't think that's new.
Oh, well, I just, I thought that sounded kind of high.
It's only, isn't it only for?
And if you have multiple events in a year?
Carnivals, circuses, theatrical, musical productions, festivals.
So it's for something that they're paying a ticket price for, basically.
If, to the extent that it recovers any of the city's costs, I think the gentleman sitting to your left would be able to remind you how much extra security costs for those events.
Okay.
What?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we think too.
Oh.
It's a bargain.
Well, I, you know, I never paid, never worked at that end of the.
Yeah.
Paying the thing. Thanks. And the other thing was when you chose your fees, I saw that there was an index that you used from Portland Salem. So does that mean you looked at other cities of this same size or it's just an index like a, maybe somebody can explain that?
We did two things. We looked at surrounding cities, mostly, I think mostly in the Portland metropolitan area and use that as comparison as to how to establish our fees. But there is also a, an automatic inflation index that's the CPI in the ordinance that allows, so that staff doesn't have to revisit this with commission every single year.
Okay.
Provides for some inflation adjustment.
Thank you, that was it, that's all I had.
Could I piggyback on top of Commissioner West's comments about the $300 fee? I think that that allows staff an awful lot of discretion because it says, "Circuses, carnivals, theatrical, musical productions, festivals and other operations of like nature are subject to the fee." So is that the flexibility that you wanted or did you mean events of over so many people or events that require city services or for-profit events or not-for-profit events? I mean, I'm just wondering, I always get nervous when, of like nature. If you mean to be subjective, then that's a different kind of discussion. Oh, it's on page six, seven.
Seven, and it's letter D.
Number one.
And number one.
Number one. So everybody get theirs, page seven.
Madam Mayor, I might be able to, I think this is designed to give city staff some flexibility because somebody might say, "Well, this isn't a festival, it's a jamboree."
Right.
Or a gathering.
Okay.
It's, the idea is that if you're going to have a whole bunch of people come together for an organized event, it implicates the city services. And so there's flexibility to capture whatever event that might be.
Okay.
I don't, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here, but this was not, not new language.
Right, no.
So I guess that's where my confusion was, is I was thinking of something new that I was working with.
It isn't new.
So I, yeah.
Okay, another question.
Yeah, I mean, if it hasn't been a problem then, but I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't some unintended.
There's always a concern with this type of, you know, you've got first minute issues in terms of gathering and other things. So there's always some delicate thinking that has to go on with these types of things.
Okay, that's great. Did you have further comment on that one? Okay, I think someone else is up.
I have one.
Mr. Fraser.
Sorry, sorry, David was next, sorry. So let me, so I, once again, on those festivals, I was thinking of things that were on the street that perhaps would have streets closed off or like Chief Conrad was saying, maybe police protection or garbage. So if you're the nonprofit, let's say, what is the one we just had, Phil Stock and Phil Hart that had an event at, on a private property, does that event have to pay a fee?
No, no, I think these are.
All outside on the street?
These are on the street, street or.
Park.
Public places.
Okay, thanks. The end.
Other comments on that? Okay, then is there a motion for adoption of a first reading of the ordinance? Hearing done, we'll move on to the next item.
Let me pull it up.
Well, we could actually.
Oh, nobody has paper copies.
We could, you know, we could actually.
No, we're all into.
They're all looking for it on the screen.
Yeah, we're all trying to figure it out.
We've all moved into the future and aren't cutting down trees.
Oh, and I'm not even on the right page anyway.
You know, we could actually hold off this first reading until the Chamber of Commerce has an opportunity to look at it.
Is this time sensitive, Scott?
Only to the effect of when the commission would want to implement the change.
Well, the thing is, the business licenses for next year have already been.
They've already been out.
They're already, yeah. So it isn't really time sensitive.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I can tell you, we're going to have some pretty heavy agendas coming up. So, you know, to the extent you feel comfortable at least going to the second reading, we can put the brakes on after that if you'd like us to.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Commissioner West?
I will move for approval for the first reading for, of an ordinance for introduction number 10-1014, amending chapter 5.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code related to business licenses.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. So further comments? First reading, Bill.
Ordinance number 10-1014, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending chapter 5.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to business licenses.
Thank you. Could you please read the whole thing tonight?
Just one last time for you.
One last time? Just read a little bit of it.
Really slow.
I'm looking at a horn, it's two minutes.
5.04.010, "Purpose in order to business, manufacturing, pursuits, professions and trade be carried on by and conducted in the city in a profitable, peaceful manner, it is necessary that same be regulated and safeguarded."
Okay, thank you very much for humoring me. Okay, so second reading next time, actually in two meetings so that the Chamber of Commerce has an opportunity for comment. Appreciate that. Next, we have another introductory.
We need a vote.
Oh, except for the vote. Details, details. All right, the vote, no more, further comment, discussion? Thank you, Nancy, the vote.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next, another ordinance for introduction. This is another adjustment to our code, a chapter that will authorize exclusions from public buildings. And we again discussed this one at our work session as well, introduced by our police chief. So Chief Conrad?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city commissioners. We're recommending that the commission approve the first reading of ordinance 10-1013, which adopts a new chapter of the Oregon Municipal Code, which authorizes exclusions from public buildings. And as the mayor mentioned, we talked about this in the work session on December 7th. The only addition to the draft you saw during that work session is we added two new offenses. One is harassment and the other one is disorderly conduct, the type of offense that will be committed in a public building for which people can be excluded. The rest is as we discussed last week.
Okay, questions about this? Any further comments?
Yes.
You have a motion, please, then, for, you have somebody? Commissioner Neely?
Just, it appeared that every, every exclusion thing that we had in there is actually covered by a state ordinance. It seemed to all be flagged, right?
Yes.
So these are, yeah, so there's no issues there at all. We're not creating any.
Nothing new.
Any nuisance definitions that don't exist in the state.
All under the criminal statutes.
Okay.
So it brings us into alignment, gives us extra protection. May I have a motion for adoption, please?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 10-1013, adopting a new chapter, I'm reading the wrong one, oh no, I'm not.
No, you're right.
Of the Oregon City Municipal Code to authorize exclusions from public buildings.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner West. Further comments? Nancy, the vote, please.
Mayor Norris.
Oh yeah, the first reading, please.
We're just a little distracted this evening.
Ordinance number 10-1013, ordinance of the city of Oregon City, adopting a new chapter of the Oregon City Municipal Code to authorize exclusions from public buildings.
Thank you, now the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Now we've come to the consent agenda and which one did we pull?
Eight A.
A.
Okay, so may I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda minus A.
Slow moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner West. On the consent agenda, the vote, please Nancy.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Now we have, under consideration, the work session minutes from November 17th. Commissioner Neely?
I'm not able to pull up the document, but I know what I'm talking about anyway. It's the.
They may have a motion on that?
The, every once in a while I raise these things, I probably should raise them one more time, more often. But in this particular case, the minutes are so brief that you miss the context of, I'm just trying to figure out how to get into it. I'll let, I'll read off yours actually.
Sure.
Where the, thank you. Well, yeah, it's under 2A and we have here, and I'll read it. Marine Cole, library director, said, "Due to findings of the due diligence inspections, she recommended discontinuing the purchase of Eastham School. She gave the history of the attempts at getting a new library for Oregon City. Because of the library district, there was a guaranteed funding source that would be approved and so forth and so forth." She said, it says that due to new findings, nowhere are these findings summarized. I mean, the reason, the reason why we agreed to discontinue it was because of those findings that were presented to us and they're just not listed there. And I know you, I know you're fond of saying, "Well, the minutes are really intended just to indicate what was said," but this is the reference point oftentimes and I just don't, I just don't think this is anywhere near detailed. It doesn't indicate any basis on which we made our decision.
Except that the other thing that accompanies the minutes are all of the documents. And so the documents that.
Staff reports.
Staff, and the staff reports, so the documents she handed out had that detail.
I understand that's the case, but the point is that these minutes here are, indicate the basis that we made decisions. And many public members would look at this and say, "Well, what was it based on anyway?" And I think these minutes are far too brief.
You might want to take that with the next city commission.
Yes, let's.
Well, it hasn't, when I complained before, it hasn't worked with this city commission, so I might as well.
I would always ask you to talk to me before, when you find an issue like that and I'll try to address it for you too. Because sometimes it really gets down to, there's a legal, as you all know this, I know, but there's a legal minimum for minutes, which is simply who is there, what time did the meeting start and how do they vote? The basis upon which the voting happened and all the rationale behind it, it varies, minutes literally vary from just that that I described to an actual verbatim transcript. And everywhere in between, and when you think about a city clerk or recorder, they're trying to aim somewhere in that middle of that continuum and they don't always hit where you want them to hit. But I think just adding a word or two there that says, "Based on higher costs that were projected," kind of summarizes that to me because then they can cite the rest of the documents. If you think that would be sufficient, we'll just make that change and move on.
I guess when I first came on the commission, that was a long time ago, the minutes were very detailed.
And I think that.
They wrote them alonghand too, didn't they?
No, they did not.
They weren't on scrolls, paper. But honestly, this granicus technology that we're using and we're all, some of us being dragged into that age quicker than others, some kicking and screaming and some just kind of writhing a bit. But what's happened in cities, it's almost remarkable, they've gone more and more from verbatim minutes because what we have now is an, forever, this dialogue right here that we're seeing is recorded for posterity. And so when people can go back and actually see the voice and hear the voice inflection and see the faces and names of the people as well as all the documents, we have even better than a verbatim record, we have a, almost a virtual reality record of what occurred. And so when, when cities have that much kind of, that kind of technology horsepower in their record keeping, many times they've gotten away from verbatim minutes.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to indicate that I'm asking for verbatim minutes, but when you make the statement that we're, we've decided to discontinue pursuing it, there should be at least some kind of statement, even in these minutes, that there was a reason for.
So it's, we had a couple of words in there that.
I think maybe a couple of sentences, a couple of sentences.
How do we know they're right ones?
Commissioners will tell you so.
Boy, we're going to have some long meetings. Okay.
Let's see, we don't have any additions yet, so what we've done in previous meetings is to approve the pending review of the tapes.
What I can do is review the recording and review exactly what the findings were as long as it was presented at that meeting, because it has to be a record of that meeting.
I'm pretty sure about four items. They were the roof, they were the inability and without tremendous cost of taking the area that was thought to be dedicated to the library to give the sufficient floor space. And there was a situation that had an old boiler that was functioning, but the question is, how long would it be functioning? And then there was references, but we knew that from before, that because of the seismic structure of the classrooms, they could not be opened up for book purposes, but we knew that earlier, that was not really the basis. So I, I don't think there were that many items.
Well, if you wish, commissioners, we can adopt this pending a review of the tape.
Or easier to.
You know what'd be easier to hold it over?
Actually, it's easier to just go ahead and approve them with the, with the changes after following the review of the record. And then it doesn't have to come back again for another vote.
We understand what the intent is, okay? Does everyone understand the intent? Okay, then would you like to make a motion, please?
I move we don't approve the minutes until they come back to a cemented.
Well, that doesn't need a motion. We'll just take that off the agenda then. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our business agenda. Next, intercommunications. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor-elect Neely and our economic development director, Dan Drenlaw, and I all went to the Oregon Business Plan Summit on all-day Monday. It was an all-day event. And we heard a lot of things there that were, I suppose, maybe more related to the conversation we had earlier at Urban Renewal about jobs, because that was the topic mostly of the summit. And.
Then the debt spiral.
It was also a really good opportunity for networking with other economic development professionals and also the governor-elect Kitzopper's transition team, most of them were there. We were able to meet a number of those folks as well. And the governor-elect spoke as well as the current governor spoke. And we were, then there were breakout sessions after that where we could get more intimate discussions with them. And it's just kind of fascinating to see the direction that Governor Kitzopper, our governor-elect Kitzopper intends to take the state. Education's going to be a major focus for him and I won't go into all of my notes that I took, but there were some figures that were particularly germane to what's happening in Oregon City and some of the issues our commission is grappling with. He talked a lot about the cost that the state, state government is, I might say, in worse condition financially than certainly than Oregon City is. Statistics show that higher educated people are less often incarcerated, this isn't a surprise to any of us, and also they use less healthcare. isn't a surprise to any of us. And also, they use less healthcare. So, uh, the governor-elect is gonna be focusing a lot on education, and trying to find a way to, I think, move some dollars from expenses like incarceration that they believe are more reactive on the end, and move those into early education systems that will be, maybe help people stop ending up in that place at the end of their, uh, school careers. He also is gonna be proposing some major changes in the way the state does budgeting, focusing more on outcome delivery rather than by department. Um, he talked about doing their regular, uh, two-year budget, but then also doing a ten-year budget, which is gonna be kind of interesting for, for those who have to estimate all the expenses. But nonetheless, that's where, where they seem to be headed. Also, um, there was mention of regional economic development offices, where staff, state staff that are now in Salem would then be setting up these regional offices, and that way, they might be a little bit more accessible, uh, to some of the cities that need help from the state in economic development. So, I thought that was also worth mentioning. Um, and then, some of the statistics that, um, were revealed to us, were, were somewhat alarming about jobs in Oregon. Um, they're anticipating 194,000 Oregonians will be unemployed and looking for work this year. Only 30,000 job openings are projected for the next 12 months, uh, meaning that 6.3 workers are, are looking for work for every vacancy that will be available. These are their projections. Um, Oregon, though, added more jobs in October this year, they said, than at any time in the past five years. So, that's a positive thing. Um, they're also rolling out a hire-first strategy, um, whereby they reimburse employers. If employers hire somebody that doesn't have the training and the skillset that they want, and they send them to training after that, the state has got a new program where they will reimburse businesses after the, uh, training is completed. So, they don't, that, that way, they're encouraged to hire people even if they don't have the skills, if they're willing to train for it, and get reimbursed. Um, so, the job, the job creation, I think, is really the challenge for Oregon. And they, they also mentioned the, the grim statistic that came out of the Portland Business Alliance last week about how Oregon is making per capita less for the same kinds of jobs as our neighbors to the north, and probably many other places in the country. Um, we've got a lot going for us here in Oregon, but there's, the job creation is something that we're struggling with, and I think, um, you know, our commission right here has got that on their agenda as well. So, just wanted to share that. And, um, then I think I had two other items. Um, I believe two of my department heads had items. There are only one now. Marine, you had something?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to report in on something that I learned this last week about a, a grant that the county was awarded. And this is a grant that, um, is a federal grant to construct a broadband fiber backbone throughout the eastern part of Plaquemus County. And do you guys know about this?
Mm-hmm. I, I reported on that.
Oh, you did already?
Um, no, some months ago, so, go ahead.
Well, it's just amazing, because it's really gonna provide us with a lot. And then, what was added to the grant was, um, some money for the libraries to be, I mean, door-to-door for us.
Connected.
And we won't have to pay anything to get it, as long as we know where we're gonna be. So, my job is to get that. I'm very excited, because apparently this is gonna happen within the next 20 months. And so, that's really great. I'm so, I didn't, it's not that I ignored you when you talked about it, it's just that, it really hit home to me when I learned about the involvement with all the libraries and everything else. And, and it's just really getting started. They've got the project managers named and all that stuff now, so it's very exciting. I think David will be hearing from somebody very soon, so...
Great.
And then also, I'd like to offer kudos to our public works director, Nancy Crushaw, for the $206,000 grant from ODOT, and to some of our elected officials and other staff that probably worked on that, were involved, Lloyd Purdy among them. So, really appreciate that effort. Um, I will be, um, away on vacation, too, like many of us, from the 20th to the 27th. And Scott Archibald will be filling in as my designate while I'm away. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, in my report, I have my final appointment, and that is Chris Lugo to the Claquemus Cable Access Board. His term will begin tomorrow and expire at the end of next year, 2011. So, I believe that fulfills the last, um, expired term before the year-end. And so, um, Mayor Elect Neely will be making the, all the, all of the other appointments after the beginning of the year. So, Commissioner West, do you have comments you wanted to make?
I do. Well, I'll make my, um, work comments first.
Sure.
Or should I?
You can do whatever you like.
Um, I don't know if you, uh, if anyone, since I missed the last meeting or two, um, if anyone's reported on the new event we're going to have on January 15th, on the, on the, um, Oregon City Arch Bridge. Uh, the event is called "The Falls: The Bridge's Story," and it, um, the event will commemorate the importance of the bridge between the communities and the work underway to create our National Heritage Area, which you've heard us talk at length about. So, key players in the story of the falls, including the grand round storytellers and dancers, local artists who draw inspiration from the site, and roving presenters weaving tales of pioneering days will be highlighting, or will be the highlights of the event. So, this is open to the public, parking on either side of the bridge, and it's on Saturday, January 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00. So, look forward to seeing you there. Um, I also wanted to wrap up, darn it, did I forget it?
That's the first day of the bridge closure, just to remind everybody.
Oh, I did. I, I'll do it without my notes. Um, I wanted to wrap up C4 for the year. Um, boy, talk about staffing and, um, financial problems in everybody's budget. The December meeting of C4 was canceled because of staffing issues from the county, at least that's what they said. But, so the last meeting I went to was in November, and I, um, have spoken at length through the year of how C4 was originally formed as a group to inspire collaboration amongst cities, and for us to work on issues that we all had in common, mainly transportation and land use issues. So, but as time has gone on, and the county has created hamlets and villages and community planning organizations, some of those people were feeling left out. So, they, um, and wanted to be part of the group, and they have been added to the group. While since adding them to the group, um, let me also back up a little. The meeting is always at C4, always on time, and ends on time, two hours. But now, our group has increased from maybe about 10, 20 people to 40 or 50. So, even closing comments in a group of that size, when we say a one-minute roundtable from, can take almost an hour. So, the meetings have become out of hand, and we're not getting as much accomplished that's of relevance to everyone in the room. And so, a lot of the cities have been dropping out. So, at a retreat, we discussed, how is this group going to reinvent itself? Do we want to disband? Do we want to just reform all over and be for cities? Do we want to, um, work in subgroups, or, um, you know, how, how should we proceed? So, that night, we had, uh, finished up a discussion, and took a vote, and seven-six, it was passed that how we're going to choose to work in, uh, 2011 and on, is that there will be a quarterly, excuse me, quarterly meeting with the large group, where everyone's in attendance, and then the next two meetings of the quarter will be a breakout. So, if you're all hamlet or village, you'll go to those type, um, you know, meetings where you'd have issues to share in common with them, and cities would, um, work together in their own. So, um, that's where that got left off. And, uh, I shared with the group that I wouldn't be back, and that Mayor Neely would make the appointment for who would be there next year, so, uh, and to wish them a warm welcome, whoever it is. So, I think that's it for my work committees.
Okay.
Oh, no. Okay. Finish reports, and then we'll get into our...
Commissioner Smith?
I don't have a report. Um, but I do want to, uh, make some comments, and I do want to, um, say a few words to my colleagues as well before they leave. Um, you're gonna be here at the next meeting, though, right?
What next?
Don't they hand it over? I don't know. I remember, it just turned over, right?
It's just brief. She doesn't really do much.
I, that's the way I remembered it last year. I'm not su, or, two years ago, gosh.
Well, it's actually, it's actually a wonderful symbol of unbroken democracy.
Yeah.
It never out of the hand of a mayor.
Um, so, I wanna, you know, this is, this is, um, until you, um, make the decision to run for, um, city office and sit here, um, you can't really even explain to people what it's like. And, and, um, the amount of work, and, um, the stress, and, um, but we all do it for a good reason, and, and we all have a vision of what we, we see this city can be. And so, not always the same, but we're always working for the same thing. And, um, I really appreciate working with Daphne. Um, and I think that the amount of work that she put in, um, you know, when you go down on Main Street, um, and really, um, you know, for somebody that's lived in Oregon City their whole life, um, I remember riding across the bridge to pick my grandpa, grandfather up from work with my grandmother. And I remember what downtown Oregon City looked like then. Um, and growing up through school, uh, high school, and I don't remember ever spending as much time in downtown Oregon City as I do now. And, in fact, I make an effort to do it. Um, I went to Subway, uh, I found out it was closing on the day it closed, so I went down there and had a sandwich. Um, I, um, you know, so it takes a lot of work. And Daphne has been, um, a really strong advocate for Main Street, and I think, um, that the work that she's done with that group has just really made a huge difference. Um, and so, I hope you stay involved in that, because I really, um, you, you can see what's happening downtown, and we, we can't lose that. Um, Daphne, you're always, um, really positive.
Oh.
Um, and cheerful. And, you know, when I walk into my classroom at my work, you know, there's always certain students that stand out, um, and just kind of are like, okay, they're always gonna be cheerful. I've never been that kind of person. I have my moments, I go up and down, and, and, but I've always been intrigued by people that are always cheerful and always seem to be positive. And, and you, um, I definitely think fit that, um, description. It's, it's always, you always have a smile when, when everyone comes in and is working, and so I, I appreciate that. Um, Alice, um, I've worked with Alice a long time, and, um, people don't realize that we, um, agree on a lot. We have a lot in common!
Boy, what's happening?
It's shocking. Um, we both love Oregon City, more than we can probably even comprehend speaking in words. Um, we are both extremely passionate about schools, and art, and history. Um, and it's one thing that I've kind of, are passive across, um, numerous, numerous times, um, since I was a kid. Um, working at the interpretive center, worked with Alice on, um, um, the, um, first art commission. Um, I worked with Alice on the bond to build a new high school. Um, so, it's, it's been a lot, and, and so, um, it's been a real joy to work with her. Um, I think she does bring, um, some class to Oregon City, and, um, which is, you know, Oregon City hasn't always been known for that. Um, and I, I just think in, in the long scheme of Oregon City, I was mentioning this today at school, um, Oregon City High School is not the same Oregon City High School that it ever was. It's a new, it's a new place. And, um, Oregon City is not the same place. Um, it's a new, it's a new city. And, um, you know, it has some of the old, um, you know, history and, um, things that make Oregon City great that kind of have stayed with it. But, it has evolved, evolved into a place that, um, I truly never imagined seeing. Um, and, um, you know, so much so that now Westland's kind of like, wait a minute, what's happening on the other side of the river? Um, that's a pretty amazing thing, and I think Alice had a lot to do with that. Um, I also, um, also, um, working with both Daphne and Alice on the South Fork Water Board has been, um, helpful. And I'm scared, um, that they're both leaving, because now I'm going to be, um, the, um...
Senior person on South Fork Water Board for Oregon City.
And, and that worries me, because it, it is not, um, it has been kind of the, the biggest learning curve for me. Um, I felt that in most aspects of my life in Oregon City, I've been connected to most everything that I've had to deal with up here, but, but not water. Um, and so, that's been, um, um, a tough one for me. Um, so, um, let's see if I've mentioned everything I wanted to mention. Um, so, thank you, I just thank you for, for the amount of time and work that you, you put in. And, um, I look forward to next year, um, when Oregon City High School will beat Westland in football for the first time in eight years. I don't know if it was a curse or what happened, but, um, the entire time you served as mayor, we lost. And, and I'm hoping that changes. And I don't, but I think it had, I think it had more to do with our team than you.
I don't know.
It was just a hunch. Um, but thank you so much. And I hope that you stay, and I, I can't, well, this is the last thing I was gonna say. I, I hope that you stay just as involved in Oregon City as you have. I, I, just in the lifetime that I've been involved in Oregon City, I can't imagine, um, in Oregon City without some involvement from you.
I know.
So, um, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Neely?
Well, I would think I, my association with both of you actually goes directly and indirectly to the Old Home Forum. Old Home Forum is a group of, uh, people, it's almost defunct now, although occasionally there's a meeting to keep us alive barely. It was a, a group of people that, um, owned old homes in Oregon City, and it was a kind of a support group. We learned various ways that, uh, of, of contractors and so forth that worked specifically on old homes. And, uh, Daphne West was in that group, and I was in that group. And when I first moved to Oregon City, I, I, I refer, I refer to myself as being a newcomer, but it's going on 22 years ago. That doesn't sound quite right, but that's the way it was. But, it was, it was an organization, uh, I believe the first person I met was, uh, was actually Claire Mett, and, and, uh, when I came in, and got me involved in the Old Home Forum, uh, later saw Daphne West there and so forth. And I think it was a building block, really, to the McLaughlin Neighborhood Associations as the neighborhood associations came into being. I think it's one of the reasons that the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association is such a strong, strong group, because it has that binding historical history that holds people together, no matter how recent they are in the neighborhood. It was very easy to become involved in this community. And, uh, so I was able to work with, uh, Daphne West there. And the first time I remember seeing Alice Norris was at my house, when we were on, I think, the Old Home Forum tour. Uh, I'd never done anything like that, and our house is actually, although it looks very tall, it's, it's limited in square feet, and, and, uh, hundreds of people came through that tour at that time. And when I was getting about 20 people on the staircase there, I started panicking, and not knowing what was going to happen. But, uh, and then, of course, I've seen Alice at many other occasions now. I had somebody telling me it was so wonderful having such a fine lady as a mayor. But one of my earlier memories was not quite as a fine lady as you might imagine. It was at a fundraiser for the, uh, in the, for the, what was the, uh, well, I, no, this was a fundraiser for the, the Oregon Trail, uh, for the, uh, for the foundation, as I recall. In any case, it was held there at, it was held there, I think, at, uh, at the, at one of the things. But there was a fundraiser, and there was an auction. And what was auctioned out, there was a pair of old bloomers.
Oh, no, she put them on.
Red bloomers. Well, she did more than put them on. She got on the table, she put them on, she hiked up her dress, and walked back and forth so people could see what they looked like. And, uh, so, uh, as I, as I, my recollection, they actually went for a fairly high price.
Oh, my God!
Well, that's one of my earliest memory, memories of you, and it's stuck in my mind ever since. And I just wanted to share that with everybody.
You know, it's, it's, that's funny, too, because, um, a lesson for you, by the way, in the future is, don't parade in your red bloomers when there's a newspaper photographer sitting right there. It was in the newspaper, too, the next day. So, I expected those red bloomers to resurface, but they, they never have.
It's been a great privilege of, of course, I'll continue to know you, but knowing you for the, almost the whole time I've been here to one level or another in Oregon City, but to work with you on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, uh, I remember my first, first meeting thinking, oh, my gosh, I have four years. My very first meeting, we had a public hearing. I had no idea how to use the microphones, or, and, and those days, we had to juggle, uh, the mayor did all the timing, and you had to juggle the microphone, and the papers, and all the cards of the people that were speaking. Hi, honey.
Williams, we're waiting back at you!
You didn't know we were here? I'm embarrassed. My, in, in all of my eight, in all of my 416 meetings, I've never seen my husband in the back of the room. Thank you. Thank you.
He was waiting for you at home.
Oh, that's so sweet. Um, makes me, makes me all tongue-tied. Um, now I forgot what I was saying. My, well, yeah, my fir, my first meeting, I just thought, I don't know if I can, I can really hand... really handle this because I never have a scheduled public hearing for someone's first meeting that's never been on the city commission before. It was really awful and very, very hard. So I, uh, we have moved so far from then, um, when, at our first meeting, I mentioned at the, at the reception, we were all given fax machines. And so we all got to have a city fax machine that we kept at home and that's how we communicated in those days. And here we are, paperless. I just think it's amazing and a huge credit to staff for organizing us and pulling everything together. I actually am mayor for 16 more days. Please, no floods. Nancy, keep Public Works working really well so that we don't have to worry about ice storms or anything.
No tornadoes.
Tornadoes, yeah. Miss, uh, I, I keep thinking, oh, please, let's just be lucky. This is actually meeting number 416 of official chartered meetings and that does include all of the other things that, that a, a mayor in particular does, but each of you carry your, your burden. So I decided to put that, all those hours in an eight hour day and that means that I have spent one year sitting in meetings. But that, that's a seven day week and I've only missed one in eight years. Um, our biggest meeting was 215 for the Walmart hearings. The longest one went till eight, I think we had two that went till 11:45, but we never got to tomorrow. Um, we spent two years on the comp plan and we never really haven't talked about that. That really set the standard for the work here in Oregon City, uh, over a two-year process. We spent two years on the Park Place Concept Plan. We spent two years on the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and we took two years to annex to the Fire District, about two and a half actually. So good solutions take a long time in coming and it's part, I think, of the work that we've done together in that, that's brought us together in an amazing way, I think, in the community. So it's, it's been a, an honor to be chosen to lead for a short time and it's, I've made incredible friends, I've made amazing discoveries. I thought I knew Oregon City very well, I've lived here a long time. And I, I call them the hidden treasures of Oregon City. It might be someone that I didn't know that, you know, was a world famous architect that actually lives in Oregon City, but always has worked elsewhere, but lives right here. Or some wonderful little piece of art that's hidden around a corner in a neighborhood. It's just been amazing to do that. I have been incredibly well supported and I thank all of you in the room and, and the citizens out there for that support. I have never felt so supported in this very, very difficult job. Um, I am so proud of the team that we've built. Without the team, nothing gets happen, nothing happens and the quality of the team is important for the quality of the work ahead. Of all the pledges that I made when I first campaigned for office in 2002, really only one that's unfulfilled and that is, we don't have a new library. I'm so sorry about that, but I think that's pretty amazing that for the hopes and dreams we all had together in 2002, um, that we've really fulfilled them all. And I'm, besides the financial health and economic revitalization, I am most proud and I've said this over and over again, but the big, I, I believe that we have really contributed to community pride. This was a community that had a strong, uh, uh, what's it called, inferiority complex and, um, they didn't really think it was highly valued. And I think the fact of the new high school really raised that self-esteem and I, I told the story before, but I love the story because I think it is so encapsulating the work. Um, there's a woman who lives in another, works in another school district, so she said, I used to come home to Oregon City with my eyes tightly closed. And she said, and now I come home, my eyes are open and I sing. To me, that's my eight years' worth of salary. It's to, to hear members of our community being proud to live here and not having to apologize for that any, anymore. So I'm, I'm very, very, very proud to have worked with you on that. Staff, we are understaffed in almost every department and so I know how incredibly hard each of you work. You are the hands, the eyes, the, uh, the diggers of the community. You make it work for us and my admiration and respect for you has grown as I've gotten to know, to know each of you. Um, I, I know we bonded through adversity, we bonded through our successes and we bonded because we all have had some of the same vision for the future. And, um, I, I adore each of you. I wouldn't trade any of you if you gave me a million dollars to any other city, so don't you leave. Um, working with Daphne has been just incredible, as, as Rocky rightly said, what a positive influence that you have been. She has also been, I think, the consummate legislator in that she never surprised staff at a meeting. She would always go to staff ahead of time or give city manager a heads up about something that was coming. And that's a really important thing that, that staff, we all need to look smart. And so for staff to be prepared, it's nice to have, and the staff, they always ask great questions. She used to come with her list of 20 questions on the, on each issue and I, I always appreciated that because they were always thoughtful. Um, again, Main Street is really been where your home is, but you've been so visible in the community and I think that's also, and some of us can't, who sit here in these chairs, and the nine people that I've served with, not everyone has been able to be visible in the community, but when you are, we learn what, what happens. Um, we, we, we are accessible to people that we might not otherwise be. Because I am the mayor of the people who didn't vote for me and I'm also the mayor of the people who do not vote or who are not registered to vote. And so I take that responsibility very seriously. I don't hang up on someone because they're not registered to vote. And I also, um, I think it's wonderful that around the table here, we sit in a nonpartisan way. We have a problem and we work together to create a solution. I think it's a real privilege, having just run for a partisan office. Um, Rocky and Jim, Jim's not here tonight, but this is gonna be your time. You've sort of been shielded by the three votes that we had, um, and now it's gonna be your time to step up to the plate, um, to demonstrate, uh, real leadership. You know, we, we, we've known what you're against and now it's time for you to show what you're for and to truly lead us into the future. We all need to see of the vision because it's vision and where you can take us that will make us excited and help us to accomplish, um, what we need, what we need to do. I wish you success and continued forward, forward progress. I wish you positive results and, uh, and, and value your staff. The staff is the most important, again, um, tools that we, that we have in the community. David, it's so wonderful to have you with your new ideas and new ways of working and another voice in the community. So I wish you well, wish you well and great success in, in building the new team because that's what you guys are going to be doing as new commissioners is that, that the better the team, the better you work together, the more consensus that you can find, the stronger you can move ahead. Lack of respect, lack of trust takes longer to accomplish your goals and also is very expensive. We've had a little bit of that over the last two years. We've slowed our work and it's also gotten very expensive. We have to do more things when we don't trust each other, so work on that. I think it's very, very important. Doug, it's, it has been a pleasure. You are so well-prepared to be mayor and I have no doubts at all that, that you, um, you're the right person for this office. Uh, you, you, you have, uh, you know how to listen, you know how to, um, you know how to legislate and you know the issues in the community, you're so intimately involved with them. So I wish you, um, the best and one thing the mayor, I believe, has to do is be the keeper of the vision. We can all get mired in details, but the mayor sort of has to think about, you know, where are we trying to go? And, and so I, I give you my vision, you can keep it, but I think it's very, very important. And remember, nothing is so bad that it can't get worse. Just a word of wisdom I've learned in my, um, yours as, yours as mayor. It, it is, it is-
Thanks, Alice, I appreciate that.
Well, I just thought that you ought to have that word of wisdom so you wouldn't be surprised. Um, but, uh, you will find such support and people will work incredibly hard, hard for you and with you, but most of all, have fun. It, it is, it is, it is a lot of fun and the greatest reward, of course, is looking around and seeing that people, um, enjoy their community and believe that it is getting better working together. And to the community, again, the positive support that I have felt has just been amazing. Um, to all of you for stepping up to help your city, for emails, cards and letters that I get all the time. The mayor gets like four times as much mail as everybody else, maybe even 10 times as much mail. Um, I have stacks and stacks of, of things. Sometimes it's, um, complaints and concerns and issues and now and then you get some good news. Um, but this is a great community. I've loved this job. Um, it, it seems like it's been a long time, but now looking back, it, of course, has gone by in the, in the, in the blink of an eye, but it's been my privilege to serve with you and, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss it, but I'm going to be, as I look around my community, so proud of the work that we've done together. So thank you, thank you, thank you all. I forgot something. You know, I always wanted to will something to the next mayor, so, Doug?
Oh, no.
One of the things, Claire, Claire Mett found this at a sale or-
Garage sale.
A garage sale for 10 cents.
Oh, my goodness.
And one of the, you know, the, one of the projects that I had was cleaning, or cleaning up, uh, we did, we redid the inside of the elevator. And, um, so when Claire found this, I started a fund for the renovation of the outside of the elevator. So Doug, there you go. This is actually a bank and, uh, I, I give you a head start on your fundraising for, uh, this project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Uh, if there's no further business to come before us.
I have one, one comment?
Yes.
Didn't you, you didn't want Daphne's?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Oh, shoot.
We're all distracted. No, my guest, no, be my guest.
Oh, Daphne, you can be first.
Yeah, exciting night tonight and, uh, Alice is so right. It's, uh, these meetings get a little long and, oh, you think, how are you gonna get through it? And bingo, four and a half years are gone. So, um, thank you all for, um, allowing me to indulge a little time and, and talk tonight. The first, um, what do, the first retreat we had as a city counselor, the question was, why did you run for city commission? And, uh, and I had said, my little plain story was, we gotta get this, um, city out of crisis management. Uh, I, you've probably heard it over and over, but you're gonna hear it one more time. When Alice took over as mayor in 2002-
Three, three.
Three. The city was on the verge of bankruptcy and, um, we had a cut, the, uh, leased library hours open or we had to cut everything, you know, so the libraries opened the lease for the largest service district and the largest circulation and we lost our neighborhood coordinator. We were really in tough shape. And, um, I had, happened to, uh, what did I do? I served on the Blue Ribbon, uh, Community Task Force and then, uh, Alice gave me, um, oh, she, an opportunity to work on, first time for, uh, a bond or a, not a bond, a, um, help me here.
The fire annexation.
Yeah, the fire annexation to pass a, joining the Fire District. So that's what, how I started on, uh, Oregon City, don't do this either. You, we had built a fire station, but didn't, uh, figure out how to fund the firemen and keep the fire station open. And, uh, it was at a point in our history where Clackamas Fire was feeling, um, a little bit, little bit resentful of giving service to Oregon City at a lesser rate than it was charging the rest of the district. So we worked on that, or I worked on that two, uh, different times to get that passed and, and then we did finally, you know, as, as she was saying, two and a half years later and, uh, put the city on the right financial track and it also, you know, secured, um, a better, uh, fire engines for Oregon City, more hours of a, uh, fire, um, or the fire station was open and more, you know, firemen on duty. So it was a good thing. So talking a little bit about things I'm most proud of, so, uh, that really just started the right course for the city. And, uh, although we had a failure then, and we, we haven't talked much about our failures, uh, in four years and that was, then we, this was before the second time we ran that levy and it passed, um, we thought we would go for an operating levy on the library because our, we have avid library supporters in this community and it was, it was heartbreaking to see, um, how little hours we had. And you know what? It didn't pass. And if I remember right, maybe Doug and Alice can help, uh, fill in the details, we were not in consensus as a commission. Maybe overtly we did the 5-0, but we weren't. And, uh, and the gossip around town, the rumor, no, it's stupid, we don't need to do this. And, uh, it didn't pass because it really, to have things go forward in a community, it really takes a, a team effort and a lot of collaborative effort. Um, so it didn't pass and then, um, a couple of years later, we had a chance, or Clackamas County was struggling with how to fund their libraries because there's city libraries and county libraries. And the county provides the, I don't know what link is the, um, acronym for, but they provide all the internet, um, services for the libraries. So, uh, they decided maybe they would form a special service district, um, to fund libraries on a long-term basis. And, you know, in Oregon City, we had the choice of whether to buy into this strategy or not because here we, it was another tax hike for, um, our, our residents, but really it did not provide for, uh, building a new library. And here we still, we had an inadequate library, uh, at Danielson's, so, but in spite of that, I supported it and we all supported it and lo and behold, that passed. It said a lot about Clackamas County and, and our, um, Oregon City that we really valued, uh, education and libraries. It was a great thing. So really proud to have been part of long-term funding for libraries. That's really, a really wonderful thing. Um, the other thing I'd like, um, Rocky and everyone has a little to, this Main Street program has been so much fun to work on and, uh, we have a great board of directors. It's all a very positive thing and it's been so much fun. We've really made some headway on it in the last couple of years and I have to give a lot of the credit to Lloyd Purdy. Um, I'm still waiting for Lloyd Purdy to get himself in a little mischief with that red hair, but he managed just to put out, he managed to put out the press releases and get all the positive attention, but you know, someday. So, no, we've, so we've had a great time, great success. And, um, then I wanna thank, uh, take the time to thank all of our staff. And if I go through everyone, you sit for a while here more, but it's been so wonderful to work with such a professional staff. I've learned so much and I, I've just really enjoyed it. And, um, I've got to work with two police chiefs and, um, I, I like Gordon Frazier, I like Mike Conrad, I'm so proud of Mike, I love his, uh, four tens. And, uh, the solution on staffing with eight police officers on the, uh, shift, it's just so fabulous. And it's been fun to hire seven police officers. He's probably, not the department that gets to say he's the least understaffed in comparison to the others now. So that, that was good. And, um, of course, our engineer, Nancy Crishour is valued all throughout the region as the most, one of the most creative, uh, public work engineers and you can see by some of our art projects with our, uh, stormwater management that, um, it shows. And Maureen has been a fun addition. Uh, she's had to make do, uh, we all complained when we were at Danielson's and here we're in another, what, a third of the size of Danielson's. And, uh, which is, but it's a beautiful facility, the Carnegie, and that's all, that part's all fun and, but, um, she is making, um, the same amount of circulation with that little library, so it-
75%.
Well, pretty close, that's, that's close.
And Carnegie actually is inadequate, but it is a nice place.
Yes. So that's been fun. I do have to have, um, a couple of special accolades, uh, um, and for David Frazier, um, it was really fun working with Larry all those years and, uh, Larry was time to go and so we hired David. And, um, uh, he was kind of embroiled in a little bit of conflict here. Elections changed and there was enough angst and, um, frustration and blame being cast around these last few years that it's kept the Oregonian and the Oregon City news in business.
Again, I'd like to thank Westland, actually.
Yes. So, um, but there's one person that I know for sure will never take any of the blame for anything and that is David Frazier because he wasn't here. And you get to start with a clean slate and I'm very happy for you. I'm happy for the community and I, it's been a healing, uh, hopefully it's healing for the commission, it's healing for the community to start all over and, and reassess the direction you're going. Um, but I do have to say something to a, one special staff person and that is, uh, I wasn't going, I'm not going to get sappy, is to Nancy Ide. Because, um, this job after four years does not even feel like the same job that when we started because of your organizational efforts. It is, she has just cleaned Oregon City up from the inside out. And, uh, the, starting from the, uh, what do you call the, uh, storage things, the dumpster, not dumpster, what do they call them?
Container.
The container- The containers with all our records. But, so Nancy Ide is our own Vicki Norris. I forget if you have ever heard of her in Portland here, restoring order and reclaiming your life. Not Alice Norris, Vicki Norris. We can talk about saving our lives. And is really organized, and that, I was saying, the inside, but also from the outside. So, you know, as we go through campaigns and we hear allegations of insider dealings and not, non-transparency, I, I just don't get it, because four years ago, there was no information available to the public. Now, everything, everything we do, if we sneeze, we hiccup, it's a, well, it's on those tapes, isn't it, Doug?
But only abbreviated minutes.
Yeah. But everything, it's just amazing what technology has done for transparency in government. And also thanks to David Knoll. We have a very creative IT department, and Nancy and David worked so hard to update us with our website and all the things you can do online. It's really amazing. And I, too, would like to thank my colleagues, and I wish Doug the best in the future. I, I know one thing that, don't ever believe an article in the paper if they say Doug didn't give you a fair shake. It will not be true. It could not be true. Because there has been no one that is more patient and listening and giving anybody a chance than Doug Neely.
Well, I will tell you, and I'll admit it right now, we had breakout sessions at this meeting we went to on the business situation and climate. I went to the budget breakout as one of them. I fell asleep.
Well, Doug, you'll have a team, so that'll be okay. That'll be okay. So I, I wish you the best, Doug. And you're the right person for the job. You've got the skills. You've got the depth of experience. You're going to do great. And Rocky, I wish you the best, too. And like, as Alice was saying, it'll be your time. I won't be taking those hits for you anymore, Rocky, so you're going to have to decide.
Somebody's been making hits on Rocky, and you've been taking them?
Or something like that. So, oh, and then, of course, it's been my privilege to work with Alice. I've been following in Alice's footsteps here, behind her, about 50 steps. Not one or two, about 50 for many years. And what a wonderful role model for public service Alice has been. And as Larry Patterson would have said, it's really fun to work with the best and the brightest. And, but wait, 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 I didn't say perfect. And we're going to save some of that, though, for your party. I'll be nice. I won't be like Doug and share blooper stories. But many of you don't...
It's called transparency.
Many of you don't know that, working with the mayor, is a former English teacher, that, you know, we're going to have the unabridged, red-line versions available at the party for you. And it's been English 101, working with Alice on city council. So I hope, as I finish my four years, did I pass my English 101?
Yes, I believe you did.
That's good news.
Larry Patterson didn't, though.
No, Larry didn't.
Particularly on the verbal.
I, I worked hard for that. So, and the last thing I want to do is thank the community for trusting in our leadership and believing in our decision-making the last four years, because, believe me, it has cost. And Oregon City, all you guys, and like the, what, is there almost 31,000 people now? So the 30,000 that I don't know that you see at the grocery store, walking in your neighborhood, thank you for your support, because you are the ones that really have stepped up to the plate. It didn't, it wasn't cheap to join, or to annex to the Fire Department. It wasn't cheap to have long-term library service, and we've secured a lot of public safety issues with our, in our sewer water and street funds. And it's cost this community. So thank you very much for believing in us and investing in this wonderful place. And so, anyway, I think I'm just about done, and I wish everyone the best the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Okay, now, the Oregon Recorder of the Year.
Well, I guess, following that, it's a team effort, and we all know it. And each one of you have, have been a really great member of this big team we have here called Oregon City. And I just wanted to say a special thank you. And I, I'm not a woman of many words, but I just want to know that, want you to know that it's been a real pleasure, just an utmost pleasure, to, to work with you and for you. When you work as closely with people as we do, we, you get to know each other in lots of different ways. And so I'm not going to make a lot of long statements, but I am going to say just a few words about you. And they both, they both meet, both of you. There've been words popping around all over the place lately, and so I thought it was the right thing to do. Anyway, this is what I think about you both, and this is truly what I think. Honest. Dedicated. Funny. Confident. Faithful. And my favorite, gracious. You both have been so gracious in, in all that you've done in, for this community, for me personally, for, for staff. And I, I just wanted to tell you, you know, I really, really appreciate it. I'm sure we all do. So thank you. And I know there are more words. And if Doug would turn around and go, look right behind him, there are some words for you on a couple of photos there that, at the open house last week, we had lots of different people sign. And there's one there for each of you. If you could hold that up so the cameras can see? There's one for, I believe that's the one for, for you, Alice, and the other is for Daphne. So that's a gift from the citizens and the city of Oregon City.
Oh, this will be a wonderful memory to have.
I hope you enjoy.
Thank you!
Yeah, so those are, those are more words for you.
Okay, shall we end this terminable meeting?
Yes.
All right. On behalf of the citizens of Oregon City, it's been a pleasure to serve, and we are adjourned.